Call this January the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Buchanan County School Board meeting to order. We can have a moment of silence. Okay, we'll do it. Anita, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Buchanan County School Board has designated the month of January each year as an organizational meeting where we elect officers. So at this time, I would like to ask for nominations for chairman.
Ms. Fletcher, Dr. Brian Looney.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blankenship. Okay, I'll put to a vote, Mr. Ray Blankenship.
Yes.
Tommy Blankenship.
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. McLanahan?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Brian Looney, we congratulate you on being chairman of the school board.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your confidence.
Yeah, let's trade seats, brother. You're gonna leave both of them beside you. You have Mr. Street on the list. Get your pen on the table.
You got a pen?
We got a wood desk over here, paper. Wooden desk. We've been over here. We'll paint it, okay?
First thing will be a nomination for vice chairman.
I'll nominate Tommy Blankenship. Give the new boys something to do.
Second.
We'll just go in order from you, Angie. I think I was supposed to be first this month.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Coach Compton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
David? I'm a yes. Uh, appointment of the clerk. Have a motion to appoint clerk.
I'll make a motion for Tanya.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. McLanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship? Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Coach Compton?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, we need to set her rate. Last year's rate was five hundred a month. Have a motion for her rate.
I make motion to leave it same.
Same.
Any discussion? Ms. McLanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Coach Compton?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Thornberry?
Yeah.
Uh, establish a board meeting time and date. Think last year we established the second Thursday. I know we change it every it comes up. Yeah, we change it per meeting, but uh, can I have a motion for second Thursday?
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Second, but one thing, uh, Mr. Looney, uh, with this basketball schedule's changing every day.
We'll set it every.
Yeah, we'll still set it every.
We just have to, can we work around that?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll set it just like we always do.
We'll just set it every time based on our calendars.
I just think, you know, for the record, we have to set a meeting time, so.
Yeah, I'm a yes.
Okay.
So we had a first, who seconded it?
Uh, we need a second.
Tommy seconded.
Tommy seconded.
Okay, I'm a yes.
Any other discussion? Angie, yes, Tommy?
Yes. Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? David?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, method for calling special board meetings, I think now it's the chairman or two members.
I make a motion to leave it like we always had it. That is.
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? Ms. McLanahan?
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Tommy, Ray?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, salary for board members, I think.
I'll make a motion to leave it like it is.
Leave it like it is.
Been like that for years.
Kind of second.
Second.
Uh, for the purpose of our minutes, I think I got it here.
I think the opposite on the mileage rate, I think the board supervisors went to seventy.
IRS new rate is seventy cents.
So I'll change that motion to go through. The IRS rate is seventy cents. I believe the salary is the same.
The salary on the chairman is eighty-eight hundred per year, vice chairman is eighty-two hundred, and the members is seven thousand. Any other discussion?
But the mileage just went up to fifty.
Seventy cents.
Seventy cents. Okay.
Uh, so we have a motion to the second?
And the clerk, did we set that?
We said, yeah. Yeah, we said clerk, didn't we?
Yes.
So, we have, okay, uh, Angie?
I'm a yes.
Tommy? Ray?
Yes.
Okay. Mike? David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, can I have a motion to follow Roberts rules for our meetings?
My, make a motion.
Motion, my, second, Tommy. Any other discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
Tommy, Ray?
Yes.
Mike? David?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, our committees, uh, let's see. Our committees, budget committee, uh, will be me and David.
I'll pass this year. I was on last year.
You'll pass last year?
I'll pass this year.
Okay, uh, anybody interested in budget committee?
Jack's good at that.
Jack, that sound good? Okay, it'd be me and Jack. Uh, salary committee, Angie and David. Insurance. Tommy, you interested?
Yeah, why not?
Insurance?
Yeah, I don't think I'm, uh, qualified to be on nutrition.
Okay, well, I'll go Tommy with the insurance. Salary committee, uh.
You already done salaries.
Okay, safety, uh, I'm sorry, safety committee, uh, Mike, continue to do that, and Coach, continue. Uh, transportation, Angie and Ray, and then nutrition, uh, we'll need somebody to take Tommy's spot there. Angie, would you do that?
I'll take it.
And then personnel will be me and Angie. Uh, need a motion for our legal representation?
I make motion to keep the streets open.
Second. Uh, any other discussion? I think the rate is two hundred per hour. That's for last year's rate.
It was last year.
Last year's rate. Uh, any other discussion?
I'm a yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Uh, Tommy, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike? David?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Qualifications of members, I think that's the state. We will have that.
I'll make a motion to accept the state.
I mean, there's nothing, that was just put in a few years ago. Honestly, I think it's put in for Robbie Klein, okay? But, I mean, it's not always been there. I don't know why. It probably showed up this year, just 'cause they did it last year. It's a code of, that's a code of Virginia.
I think it's a code thing.
Yeah, it's a code of Virginia. You can't, there's nothing to do.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of scheduling it and.
But from my.
Do I need to make a motion? Does somebody have a motion?
There's nothing to make.
I don't think there is anything that needs to be made.
State code.
Yeah. Uh, we have our recognitions now.
Thank you all for coming, and, um, we have our football. We have our boys around here this evening, so as I call your name, if you will come up, we have Logan Lester. Class one, all-state football, second team offensive, all-purpose, second team defensive back, region one D football, first team offense, all-purpose, and first team defense back. And I'll have Mr. Bostick and Mr. Cooper to come up with these boys. Then we have Trey Taylor. We have region one D football, first team running back. Carson Deal. Region one D football and first team linebacker. So these boys, Bertie Grundy, Mr. Bostick, do you have anything you'd like to say about your boys?
I'd like to have two of these back next year.
Yes, I know.
I want to have Trey luckily, but the, these two, not only on the field, but off, you can't ask for any better.
As good athletes as they are, they're better individual beings.
Thank you for coming and thank you for representing the Buchanan County Schools. Thank you guys.
Uh, we have now our public delegations. Is anyone else interested in addressing the board that's not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll have Sanska.
Dana, good to see everyone tonight.
Good to see you, Tim.
Well, it's been challenges past month on the job site for sure, as everyone knows, but we still have made progress and some good progress. Run a little quicker here. So, uh, this, uh, month, the site grading has continued. Uh, the football field is nearly excavated, is complete. Um, they actually started excavating the athletic road today up to the athletic fields parking. Uh, stone has been installed in the parking area for the athletic fields. Uh, concrete foundation work in the gym area has been completed, and the low block in the gym area, which is two courses up to finished floor, has been completed. Um, the MEP on the gym area has already started underground. That's underground plumbing rough end, electrical rough end is always underway. Um, concrete foundation work in auditorium area, uh, they will finish all those footers up tomorrow. Um, and they already started laying some block, a low block in the auditorium area. And then, of course, this will continue, uh, as soon as weather breaks, so they can, uh, meet all the requirements for cold weather, uh, protection and all for the CMU. Um, foundations for the offices and CTE wings, uh, a little bit of that's already started. That's Area C. Uh, they will be moving on to that area after they get the footers completed in the auditorium area, which will be tomorrow. Uh, and then slab on grand prep, uh, in the gym area should start the next month coming up. Um, so that's a good thing. Um, other than that, the weather's been rough, but, uh, things are still moving forward, and they're working as much as they can to, and dealing with the weather. Few pictures here, um, this is where they've got the football field dug out. Uh, this was on the second of January. Um, this is some of the underground plumbing, um, that's already been installed. This is for the bathrooms that will be used for the gym as well as the football field. Um, this is some block that was being laid in the gym area. Um, there's a whole lot that's, there's a lot of rebar and block stick all around there already. Um, there's the, uh, stage footer for the front of the stage. Um, that was poured, uh, just after Christmas. Of course, this was last week. This is what it looked like up there when I drove up there. But, uh, they are, uh, branches working as hard as they can. Contractors are wanting to work. Um, so we will continue to push, uh, with the project and, uh, get this building underway. Any questions or comments? Uh, thank you.
Do we have anything to go in closed session for?
Yes, personnel and legal.
Personnel and legal advice. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
You got Mark and him on delegations.
I'll make a second.
Second.
You all?
Are still moving at the second. I'm leaving the closed session. Uh, Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes, Coach?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
We'll go to closed session.
Welcome to the Southern Gap High School groundbreaking ceremony. As most of you know, my name is Sherri Fletcher, and today I am greatly honored to be, to serve as your emcee. I would like to thank all of you for attending today, and the first thing today, I will provide a little background information for those of you that may not be familiar with our journey. In response to the April nineteen seventy-seven flood in the Levasse Fort Basin and the millions of dollars in damage and losses from this flood, the Energy and Water Development Appropriations Act of nineteen eighty-one and the subsequent legislation provided authorization for the development of flood protection measures for the Levasse and Tug Forks of the Big Sandy River Basin. Section two oh two of that legislation directed the Secretary of the Army, acting through the Chief of Engineers, to design and construct flood risk management measures in those affected area by nineteen seventy-seven flood. Non-structural flood control measures implemented would prevent further losses from occurring either from a flood equal in magnitude to the April nineteen seventy-seven flood, or the one percent annual flood, also known as the one-hundred-year flood, whichever is greater. In two thousand nineteen, the Buchanan County Non-Structural Flood Damage Reduction Project received supplemental appropriations to complete flood risk management measures pursuant to the Disaster Relief Act of two thousand and nineteen. This supplemental appropriation authorized the government to complete implementation of the project at full federal expense. The Corps and the sponsor amended the project cooperation agreement on October the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty to reflect the implementation of the project at all federal expense, the flood risk mitigation measures pursuant to the study authorization, Energy and Water Development Appropriation of nineteen eighty-one. A detailed evaluation confirmed the feasibility of a ring wall to protect the tech center, but revealed substantial technical issues regarding feasibility of a ring wall to protect Hurley High School. The recommendations for Hurley High School has thereby been modified from ring wall to flood plain acquisition. In January two thousand twenty-one, the Buchanan County Board of Education voluntarily proposed an alternative plan to consolidate the tech center and Hurley High School into a shared replacement facility on a new relocation site at Southern Gap. This site would be also utilized to consolidate up to two other county high schools. Corps review of the site determined it meets and/or exceeds the criteria to meet the two thousand, the two oh two program. Given cost savings for the high school and reduction of operational risk and uncertainties associated with the tech center ring wall, it was determined relocation of the function of tech center and Hurley High School to the Southern Gap site is in the best interest of the federal government and meets two oh two program intent. I would like to start by recognizing our distinguished guests and speakers. We have Colonel Jason Putman, Commander of the Huntington District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Mrs. Mrs. Catherine Carver, Chief Real Estate Division of Great Lakes and Ohio River Division, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Shane Klen, Representative from Senior Mark Warner's office. Laura Beavins, Representative from Senior Kane's office. Cody Mumpower, Deputy District Director from Congressman Morgan Griffin. Tyler Lester, Representative from State Senator Todd Pillen's office. And Tom Lester, Representative from the Virginia House of Delegates, Will Northfield. Our speakers for today will be Colonel Jason Putman, Shane Klen, Tyler Lester, Curtis Ellsworth, Craig Stiltner, and Angie McLanahan. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize members of Buchanan County Constitutional Offices. And we have Alan Boyd here, for Sheriff, Nikki Stiltner, Matt Killen. Members of our Buchanan County Board of Supervisors. Craig Stiltner, Roger White. Members of the County IDA Board, Alicia Oakwin, Matt Killen, I'm not sure if the volunteer, Kelly Oakwin. And members of the Buchanan County School Board. I also want to thank some special people today. Our coaches and teachers from each high school for bringing the vans and helping with the parking. We have. We have students from each high school that was ushers today. Thank you. And our Buchanan County van. Our principals and central office staff, which has helped so diligently, and I couldn't have made it these past two days without my staff. They work hard, as well as all of the parents, students, and community members that are here today. So at this time, I would like for you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the National Anthem and the invocation. We will now be led in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance by our Eagle Scouts, Blake Brawls, and Brody Compton.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now be led in the singing of the National Anthem by the Buchanan County Band. Now we have Hesper Mike Rife from Bessette Church of Christ.
Dear God, we are glad that you are here. We are glad that you were present at each and every meeting in the past. And we pray and we are grateful that you we know that you will be with us in the future. You're God and you know the past. You're here now and you're going to lead us into the future. We pray a special blessing upon this school, faculty, the staff, the leaders in our community. But most of all, we pray that out of this school will come students who will be great leaders and wherever you plant them. It's our prayer that every student that graduates from this school and all schools, that they will bloom wherever you plant them. But we pray, God, that you will continue to lead, guide, and direct. And we pray this prayer in the name of your son, who is the same yesterday, today, and forever, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Our first speaker today is Angie McLennan, Buchanan County Public Schools School Board Chairperson.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to stand here today on behalf of my fellow board members in the Buchanan County Public Schools. This has been a long journey and while I recognize that we still have a journey ahead of us, today's milestone groundbreaking for construction of the Southern Gap High School is exciting and it puts us one step closer to the opening the doors of the vast and invaluable opportunities that we can offer to our youth. We are only here due to the hard work and long hours that consisted of many meetings, collaboration, and negotiations between many. It is that work that often goes unrecognized, but today with many of those individuals here, agencies and departments being present and represented, I want to say thank you. Thank you to each of you for making this school a reality with your diligence and your perseverance. As we all know, this beautiful new facility will open so many doors for academics, sports, vocational trades, arts, and musical opportunities for our children. The ability to host events beyond our district will be an asset to our community as a whole. How proud we will be to be able to hold these events here and show off our beautiful mountains and the southern hospitality of our Buchanan County folks. The Buchanan County Schools' mission statement is, "Our Children, Our Future, Our Responsibility." I truly cannot think of a better representation of that statement than the collaborative efforts for Southern Gap High School. May we never take for granted this blessed opportunity that we have been given that's going to outlive us all for generations to come. Go Eagles!
Our second speaker for today will be Shane Clem from Senator Mark Warner's office.
Thank you, Sherri, and I'll second that. Go Eagles! I look forward to pulling for Southern Gap, except as my friend Tommy Krieger would say when they played the big R. That's all I have. I'm actually here, Senator Warner asked me to recognize one particular person. Took many people to get to this day. This individual is so responsive to our office, our multiple inquiries, always got back to us in a timely manner. And that individual is retired Colonel Robert Peterson. So I want to read this letter from Senator Warner on your behalf. As committee gathers today for Buchanan County Public Schools groundbreaking for the consolidated high school, I'm pleased extending my appreciation for your diligent work to bring this project to fruition. Civil servants like you are the backbone of our nation, dedicate themselves daily to ensure the American people can rely on their federal government. We are all indebted to you for your efforts as a project manager for the United States Army Corps of Engineers on the consolidated high school project. If you come up, I want to present something to you. I'm pleased to present you with an American flag that was flown over the United States Capitol. I hope it will display this flag in its official class to give reminder of its values that represents in recognition of your commitment to serving our nation. On this important occasion, I'm pleased to join with your family, friends, and colleagues in saluting your accomplishments and wishing you success in all your future endeavors. Sincerely, Mark Warner. Well, we appreciate you. We appreciate you. Thank you, guys.
And I'd just like to say, I'm truly humbled and honored. And I just want to personally thank the Board of Supervisors, Craig Horn, the School Board, Melanie Hibbert, and of course Sherri and Angie for bringing it across the finish line. So yeah, this ceremony and this groundbreaking wouldn't have been possible without all of their hard work.
Our third speaker for today will be Tyler Lester from Todd Pillen's office.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Senator Todd Pillen. As a member of the Senate Finance and Senate Education and Health Committees, one of Senator Pillen's top priorities is providing the resources and opportunities necessary that allow our region's students to thrive and succeed and working with federal and local partners to ensure that happens across all levels. He extends his thanks to the local leadership here in Buchanan County, our federal legislative delegation, and the Army Corps of Engineers for all the hard work and tough decisions that have had to be made along the way to get to this day. Much like your neighbors across the mountain in Dickinson County when Bridgeview High School was completed, this school here at Southern Gap will be the envy of Southwest Virginia, providing a state-of-the-art facility that our students deserve to learn in, experience, and prepare for their futures. As construction moves forward, Senator Pillen stands ready to assist in any way that he can. And third time's the charm, go Eagles!
Our fourth speaker will be Colonel Jason Putman, Huntington District Office.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, friends, and family. Thank you for being here and really appreciate you guys inviting us to share this with you. I'm not sure there's a whole lot I can add to what was said earlier. This really is a special event. You did hear how we got here, hey, section 202 unfortunately came out of the 77 flood. Maybe a sad event for a lot of the folks who either lived it, heard about it, saw it, felt it. But in some cases, good can come from that. And 202 is special, just like this part of the country. I tell my team, they're probably sick of me hearing it. I'm originally from Vermont. It's where I grew up, so this is not unlike where I grew up. Some of the challenges are the same, some of the issues are the same. So it feels a little bit like home. And one of the unique things that we get to do at the Corps sometimes, it doesn't always work out this way and sometimes it takes us time to get to that point, but we get to do things that do make a significant impact. Everything from dealing with disasters and seeing people on their worst day ever to events like this, where the event that led us to this may not have been great, but this one is. And as we have talked about, this focus is really about education for the children. And that makes such a difference for them and our communities and our nation down the road. So I don't know that you can do much better than doing something for the education of children. So I really feel privileged to be here. I'm really happy because the colors are the same as my alma mater, West Point, so it makes it easy for me. If it had been blue and gold like Navy, why does that not work? But no, congratulations on achievement. And I will say, please join me in a round of applause for your federal, state, and local elected representatives that worked extremely hard through all of this to make sure that this got done. Their teams on a daily basis. And again, I don't know that I can say go Eagles because. I guess I just did, right? But congratulations, good luck, obviously. We've still got some steps to go, but this is where you start, so thank you.
Next speaker will be Curtis Ellsworth from Skanska.
Not sure who put me after the Colonel. Good afternoon, everybody. What a significant day for Buchanan County. Being from here, I know how important this project is. I've been the project manager on this project for several years, through planning, design, and now you can see construction. But there's been a lot of people involved and a lot of effort been put forth. And so we want to recognize some of those people today that's really been working behind the scenes. And I'll start with the expanded Skanska team. We have with us Tim Burge, who will be our onsite inspector for the project. Jeff James, who's not with us today, who's been assisting in the project management responsibilities. And then we also have the team from Branch Builds, who's our design-build contractor on the project. We have Mr. Mike Howdischel here in the group on the stage. Mike is a senior project manager, has been great to work with on this project. We also have some other representatives of Branch Builds team scattered around, I can see some of them. Mr. Jason Hoyle, who's President of Branch Builds, is with us today. We have Barton Austin, project executive. Matthew Underwood, who I've known for many, many, many years. A graduate of Grundy Senior High School, I believe, Mr. Doug Childress. We have Business Development, John Gardner. Senior Superintendent Jimmy Kenyon with the fancy hat. Travis Cooper, I'm not sure if he's with us today or not. He's not. Joe King, who'll be superintendent for Branch Builds. And then we also have our architects from VMDO Architects out of Charlottesville. They are being represented by Joe Solentano. And they have a slew of consultants and people that have been working on this project. I talk to them almost daily, but I'm going to recognize some of them today. Andres Pancekko, who's with us today. Brady Scott. Drew Fleming. I don't believe I've seen Kelly, but Kelly Callahan. Randy Livermon. As well as James Atkins, who cannot be here today. We also have a local firm who's our civil engineer on the project with Terra Tech, being represented by President Billy Campbell. Billy may be the one that's been involved in this project longer than me. And one other person in the back I see is Jessica Smelzer with Envision. She's our furniture consultant. Imagine a lot of planning goes around furniture. And quickly, and I'll be quiet, but there's a few other people I want to say special thanks to that have put in tons of hours on this project. That would be Jack Compton, who's a school board member. Angie McLennan, School Board Chair. We have Ben Street, Legal Counsel with Buchanan County Public Schools. And I think my new best friend is Sherri Fletcher, who we talked three or four times a day for the last, you know, year or so. So thank you all very much.
We have next Craig Stiltner, representing the Board of Supervisor.
I'm going to tell you a story, Mike. I know you want it, right? For those of you that don't know, Mike Rife is a diehard Jets fan. And he's sitting back here and he says, you know, Craig, the one thing you missed, and he said, you missed a gold, we missed a golden opportunity to name that school right. We're thinking, he said, there's, what else is at Southern Gap? You know, I'm sitting here trying to think about what I'm going to say now, you know? I'm not worried about what else is here, you know? And he said, think about it, the Jets. And it goes to numps with the airport, right? So anyway, but you know, only Mike would be trying to figure out a way to get his New York Jets pushed into Buchanan County, right? We love you, Mike. But you know, I look around, I've been involved in Buchanan County for a long time, between coaching, politics. I see a lot of friends and I'm a very emotional guy. I wear my heart on my sleeve and I swear, I look around, I see this thing and I mean, finally. I mean, man, I'm telling you, finally see it coming to pass. I mean, my daughter was in like the eighth grade when this thing first started happening. Craig Horn, the county administrator, and I, we talked about how our daughters was going to get to play basketball together at a new school and, you know, at Southern Gap and it just never did happen. And then we start talking about it again, it kind of phases out and then, you know, it starts getting a little snowball effect and, you know, finally we're, you know, we're ready to break ground. So I want to thank everybody. I mean, everybody that's had a hand in on this. I know there've been a lot of people mentioned. There's had to be somebody we've missed, I mean, between the Corps and the local and the state and the federal. So let's give these guys a hand one more time. Anybody, if you had a hand in on this, I mean, seriously, just give my hand to get this thing going. One thing I ask is that, you know, I brought up the thing about coaching, look back and see Coach Cooper and see several other coaches, Coach Compton back here sitting beside of him. You know, in coaching, you know, the one thing that really makes a good team is unity. And for a team to click, you got to come together. What makes a community come together, you know, is love. People can say what they want about Buchanan County. I've been around the world, I've been a lot of places, but I'm telling you, I always find my way right back here. I love Buchanan County and I've said it for years. When I, when it was Grundy High School, you cut me, I bleed blue and gold. If there's another team for Buchanan County playing that Grundy's not playing, you cut me, I bleed red and blue and white. I don't care, I bleed black and purple, as long as it's Buchanan County. But today, you cut me, I bleed black and gold. I'm diehard Southern Gap Eagles. I'm all about it and I want you to bring that pride that you brought from Hurley, that you had at Hurley, that you had at Twin Valley, that we had at Grundy, bring it to Southern Gap and let's go out and let's kick some butt, take names now, okay? Good thing. Love you, guys.
It's a little difficult to follow after all of those. I just wanted to say some closing remarks to all of you today, that this day is not just about the groundbreaking. It's about building dreams, fostering opportunities, and laying the foundation for a brighter future for our kids. Southern Gap High School will not only be a place of academic excellence, but it will be a place for our kids to be creative, to be innovative, and to explore new passions and talents and to grow as leaders of tomorrow. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of so many, many individuals that's made this day possible. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your commitment to our students. To the teachers and staff, thank you for your unwavering dedication to our students. It inspires us all. To the parents and community members, your support and involvement is invaluable, and we're deeply grateful for the trust that you place in us. So as we look forward to the future, this new school, Southern Gap High School, will be equipped with the state-of-the-art facilities, innovative technology, and flexible learning spaces that can meet all the diverse learning needs of all of our childrens. But our goal is to nurture not only the academics, but a sense of community. As Craig said, we have to be committed to ensuring that this school will reflect the diversity, and that they get to communities together, and that so every child will have the opportunity to thrive. So as we break this ground today, let us also break barriers. Let us break the barriers of doubt, of fear, of the limitations that hold our students back. Let us build the bridge that will connect our students to their dreams, their future, and to each other. Together, we have that power. We have the power to create an environment where every student will succeed, and our community will flourish. This groundbreaking ceremony marks the beginning of a new era in the education for our community, and I am thrilled to see what the future holds. So let us celebrate this milestone, not just for the building that's going to be built on this site, but for the countless lives that's going to be transformed within its walls. Together, we're building a legacy. We're building a legacy of hope and opportunity and success for generations to come. So now, what we've all been waiting for, I'm going to ask all of our distinguished guests to pick up a shovel, and we'll secure it in the dirt. So, all of our shovels are down here. Want the hard hat too? I forget about the hard hat. I told them I didn't want my hard hat, because they get upset. And I said, "I don't look at any hats."
I'm going to get that, let you.
On the count of three, the car maker. One, two, three. Project is officially under construction.
Doing different, like nails, hair, and learning all of like big break things about it.
I like learning about how important cybersecurity is, like to everything, just like with my video game passwords, like just going to the store, how everything's just out there in a way. This is a very interesting class, and I love how, and popcorn Fridays.
What's your favorite part about pharmacy?
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nama, yes. Can I have a motion to certify a closed session?
Motion certify.
Second. Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nama, yes. Do we have any motions from closed session we need to consider?
Hey, Ray. Oh, fuck you're out there. You ain't coming out for... Fuck you're out there. Man, I can only see so far.
He was with Scotty. You can't see over there.
Short jokes, guys. Hey, yes, I'd like to make a motion to request some middle school football helmets, since we are combining...
How much would it be?
County football teams this year. It would be fifty-five hundred dollars.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve his request to buy football helmets for the middle school. But that team.
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
Ray? Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nama, yes. Any other?
Well, we needed to readdress that Johnny Hagerman bid, the brick entryway on the new school. And somebody said, "There was a letter." Is there a letter, Sherry?
An email. I do have emails from the lady in the letter. Mr. Rales...
There is a letter, too.
You have a letter. Wasn't there a funding issue? Is there a funding issue?
I identified funding to payback for it.
Okay, and?
We have a letter from Sun Coke.
That will cover the cost? So I'll make a motion to approve it. Incorporated in that motion's also a thank you letter to Sun Coke, as well as maybe something for Hagerman. Somehow, he could maybe in the artwork, down in not big, but somewhere give them credit, because it's expensive, right? Almost under a thousand dollars? So somewhere in his artwork, he needs to put a little thanks to Sun Coke for their benevolence. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
And want to say thank you to Sun Coke as well.
Absolutely.
The amount probably needs to be in there.
What's the amount, Curtis?
Eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand. Okay. Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nama, yes.
Curtis, you said you had a change order to the building package?
Change order number one of the building packages for Branch Builds.
And how much was that for?
It's a net credit of six, four, three, 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 seven, four, zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
What was that?
Change, that change order.
Credit.
Credit.
Trust me, it'll get spent down when the dude, the next one, then we'll add money. So it's called pluses and minuses. So the debits are by the window, the credits are by the door.
Tommy?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nama, yes.
Did Lima Wees say something about the property across from Twin Valley Elementary?
Yes, we had an amendment from the county.
What do you have, Sherry?
Yes, we have an amendment to be approved on the property.
So he sent us something back down?
Yes, sir, he did.
Okay, so I'll approve his request, provided we have legal proof off, sign off on it. I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. All right, Angie?
Nama, yes.
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nama, yes.
And then Sherry, you seem to mention that there's a teacher down, there's a person down at Riverview that's got the, completed their paperwork?
It's Grundy High School.
Grundy High School?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what's her name?
Hannah Boyd.
Okay, and we had interviewed her for the English teacher job?
Yes, sir.
And she's now completed her and got certified for that?
Yes, certification is sent off.
It's been sent off to DLE. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, to approve her.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Angie?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Tom?
Ray?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Nama, yes. Was that all closed session? Okay. Then we have approval of our minutes from last meeting.
I need to state that there needs to be a correction on the virtual days. I said four last month, and we had used three at that time. So that needs to be corrected in the minutes.
We note that in the minutes, Tom?
Yes.
Can we have a motion to approve pending?
Motion to approve your minutes with the correction of four to three on virtual days.
Second.
Second.
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nama, yes. Number seven, payment of our bills. Motion to approve and pay our payables.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
And a second.
Second.
Have a second.
Since Ms. Tester's not here, do we have money? Yes, to pay our bills? Okay, yes, we can pay our bills. I'm a yes.
Angie? Tom?
With exception of Southern Gap.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Nama, yes. Say, enrollment update?
Enrollment update, okay, we were up last month, and we're down this month. Minus twelve students. We lost two to homeschool and the others out of county. So our enrollment is twenty-two oh four.
Sure, you know how many kids we got on homeschool?
Homeschool...
Estimate.
Estimate, probably about seventy-seven, eighty.
Homeschool or homebound?
Not homebound, homeschool.
Homeschool, yes.
And you said, well, eighty, maybe?
Probably seventy, eighty, don't, yes.
A lot of them do that with, they start getting aggravated with attendance.
Yes, when they get...
They start getting upset, that's when they leave.
Yes.
So what's our enrollment today?
Twenty-two oh four.
And down twelve?
We were up twelve last month, we lost them this month.
It's what she said, two's homeschool and ten out of the county.
Yes, we had several that moved, we did.
All right, I have a motion to approve substitute volunteers and coaches.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nama, yes. The elementary STEM program, is that just an update?
It's just an update. I had the notes in your packet. Mr. Thornberry asked for me to give an update. Our teachers in the elementary schools, they are doing a lot, a lot of hands-on, a lot of project-based. Our activity teachers are involved with the classroom teachers, they collaborate, and I've been very proud of them this year. We've got competition, it's snowed us out a couple times, but grades five through seven are doing, going to do some county competitions, and it's based on the SOLs that they are